Hi, my name is Mari. I have been a Weight Watchers coach for over 18 years and have lost 31 kilos. And welcome to the start of our Week of Wonder. This morning, we have three very special, successful and very inspirational Slimmers. We have Kayla. She was the Melbourne State finalist for the Healthy Life Awards. We also have Grant Lee, who is from New South Wales, the Healthy Life Awards state finalist. And we have Cathy, who was one of our members from the local elders meeting. So we're here at Mount Anan, meeting room, and we're about to have an exceptionally inspirational and motivating morning. So join us and I hope you're just as inspired as we have been. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our... How are you all this morning? Oh, well. It is wonderful to see so many of you here this morning to kick off our Week of Wonder. So a big welcome to everyone that's here today and a big welcome to all of our online viewers as well. This morning, we have three very inspirational guests that are going to be sharing their stories with you. And I think you're all going to walk out of here feeling very, very motivated to kick off this fantastic week that we're having. So a little bit about me, in case you don't know me. My name is Mari. I have been a Weight Watchers coach for over 19 years. I have lost just over 31 kilos. And I think what I never imagined when I first joined Weight Watchers is that not only would I become a healthier, happier person, but I never imagined that it could lead to probably the most rewarding, fulfilling job that anyone could ever have. So being able to have a part in everybody's weight loss journey, it's been absolutely amazing and very rewarding. I think over the years, I've probably helped many, many brides fit into their, you know, their dress of their dreams. A couple of gentlemen looking very hot on their wedding day, fitting into their nice suits as well. I have helped many young mums, and Cathy will be one of those, get back into their pre-pregnancy outfits. I even helped one beautiful young lady, well, she calls herself a young lady, June, who got married for the second time at the age of 72. And she said she felt like a princess on her wedding day. So that was really beautiful. So it's a wonderful, very rewarding role for me to have. So without any further delay, I would like to now introduce you to our three guests. And I'm sure you'll help me making them feel very, very welcome. I would like to start with Kayla. A big welcome to Kayla. And Kayla has come up from Melbourne to join us for this morning, which is very exciting. And Grant Lee, please make you feel welcome as well. Welcome to our class. And of course Cathy. So a big welcome to Cathy as well. Welcome along Cathy. All right. So how are you feeling about being here this morning?
Extremely excited.
Extremely excited. That's wonderful. Fantastic. All right. So Kayla, we might head off with you. So I believe that you've tried to lose weight before, is that correct Kayla?
It is. I've been overweight for pretty much my whole life, since I was a child, all through my teenage years. I think I tried every diet under the sun. Then I started doing Weight Watchers. I did it two or three times before it actually kicked in and sunk in what I needed to do. And then obviously my final try, and still on my journey, which is for the rest of my life, it is a lifestyle choice now. So yeah, Weight Watchers has really worked for me.
Fantastic. So can you see, because you said you've joined a couple of times before, and I'm sure that Kayla's not alone, correct? We've all... Who's tried more than once to lose weight? Yes, okay. So yes, so many hands. So what do you think made such a difference that the last time for you?
I think it was really the mindset as well. It was having to work out what kicked it for me. Also, this amazing support I had, my team leader Bec, she's amazing, and all the people from my meeting were all just a little family. So it was really the support that got me through.
Yeah, it made a really big difference for you. Okay. So I believe that this is the first time that Weight Watchers ever had a youth ambassador. So tell us a little bit about that, Kayla.
Yes, so this year, so Grant Lee and I were in the 2014 Healthy Life Awards, which was the best week of our lives, I'm sure you can agree.
Yeah, it's pretty crazy.
And I was fortunate enough to become the youth ambassador for 2014, which is extremely exciting. The role was created mainly around the fact that obesity affects so many of us, starting in our younger years, going all the way up. My role mainly this year is to try and help support and motivate people who are in my sort of age category, those younger and those struggling that haven't, might not have found the motivation or confidence to even start doing a weight loss journey. So yeah, hopefully this year will be really exciting for them as well as me.
Absolutely. That sounds fantastic, really fantastic. So during your weight loss journey, did you have any times that got a bit tough for you?
Most definitely.
Yeah, would you like to share?
I was just speaking to some of the members about, with my weight loss, I went for about 18 months where I did, I did really well. I lost about 30 kilos. I was on top of the world. And then I'm sure as many of you will have also hit, a plateau. My plateau went for quite a long time. It went for about 12 months. I didn't gain or lose more than five kilos, so I was extremely lucky in that sense. The big thing with my plateau was that I stayed at my meeting. I attended every single week without a doubt. And it was by the, after the 12-month period, I realised that something's got to give, something's got to change. And with the support of my leader, and we kicked it and went on, losing another 15 kilos and reached goal.
Wonderful, fantastic. So absolutely. So Kayla, would you like to share today your total weight loss?
So to date, I've lost 47 kilos.
Wow. It looks amazing, absolutely amazing, yeah. And can I ask you, what is the best thing about being where you are at today?
Most definitely would be my confidence, my outlook on life and my happiness. Anybody that knew me before, I was, I was quite withdrawn. It's quite emotional being so overweight, being so young. So after losing the weight, I found that I've got a lot more confidence, I'm a lot more happier, happier in my own skin. I can just do a lot more and just be a regular 22-year-old, which I should be.
Yeah, that sounds wonderful. A big congratulations to you on where you are today. Well done, that is absolutely wonderful. Well done. All right. Wow, she's giving me goosebumps. Anybody else feeling them, yes? So would anyone like to ask any questions at all of Kayla? Siobhan, if you could stand up, please.
Kayla, could you tell us what was that, what got you over that plateau?
Yeah, so obviously being within that sort of five-kilo range for so long, it was really hard. And I sort of, I kept telling myself, it must be just where I'm going to be, my body doesn't want to lose anymore. It's obviously had enough. And then it's all to do with your mindset. It was, I said, no, I'm not at goal, I'm not where I should be, I'm not in my healthy weight range. And I had to change something. And it was getting into the mindset that you can do this and you will do this. And I did. So it was, yeah, it's more a mindset thing than a physical thing, yeah.
Yes.
Did you change any of your eating habits during that plateau? Did you change your exercise to jerk yourself back in to start losing again?
Yeah, definitely. So I went, that 12-month period, I will admit, I did get a little bit lazy. Things started to just become easier. And then I just, after I, nothing had changed, after speaking with Bec, my leader, she said, we've got to, we've got to do something to spark the fire again. And I decided to change my exercise patterns. I started doing PT three times a week with my awesome trainer, Tom. And we did that and started moving things along, my eating habits as well. I found that I was eating the same thing, even though I still regularly eat nearly the same thing every day, they weren't the best for my body at the time. And I had to just change a few things around. And definitely those little changes made a huge difference.
Yeah. So could I just ask Kayla, because I know I get this question often from members, you know, all the time, did you get to the point after you'd lost your initial amount of weight where a lot of people were saying, you look great, don't lose any more, you're fine? Do you think that had a little bit to do with why you stayed where you were?
Yeah, definitely. Because people would sort of say, oh, you don't need to lose any more weight, you're skinny enough, you're skinny enough now, don't worry about it, you're there now. And you sort of went, oh yeah, oh yeah, I've lost 30 kilos, that's good enough, you know, I don't need to do any more. But then you sort of look at yourself and you go, oh no, I do have a bit more to go and I shouldn't be getting so slack.
Yeah, and got back into it. Fantastic. All right, well, very, very encouraging. Thank you for sharing with us. So our next very inspirational guest that we have this morning is Grant Lee. So welcome, Grant Lee. So before we get started, can we, can you please start off by sharing with everybody your total weight loss?
Yeah, with the programme, I lost 77 kilos.
And it is insane, I agree. It's an amazing amount of weight actually, isn't it? And to look at, to look at Grant Lee, Grant Lee, stand up for us. So to look at this gentleman, yes. So to look at, yeah, you can sit down.
There might be another whistle.
So to look at Grant Lee, you would not imagine, I mean, I could not imagine.
Well, I've got a photo here, right?
Oh, great. That's what we needed to see.
There you go. That was me on Christmas Day, 2012.
Goodness me. Goodness. That, oh my God, that doesn't even look like the same man.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big, it's a big change. And I think that the, he's the full-time physiotherapist too. That was me at work. So yeah, so it's actually, he was hiding behind Kayla. But yeah, the thing is with, with my weight loss is I never thought I had a problem.
Do you know, it's funny you should say that though, because, and I've got to be careful saying this, a lot of men don't. Do they, really?
And guys, guys don't think we've got a, guys do not think we've got a weight problem. We think that, oh, that's just us, you know, I'm okay, I'm fine. And, and that's the truth of the matter with me. I thought that was me. I thought being that way was how I was going to, was going to end my day, or not, that's how I was going to end the rest of my life, was being that big, yeah.
All right. So tell me then, what drove you to the doors of Weight Watchers?
So what happened was, my wife and I had been married for probably 10 years at this stage, and we had no children. And we'd had a unsuccessful, my wife had lost a child to miscarriage in 2010. And we just couldn't, it just wasn't going to happen. We couldn't, my wife couldn't afford pregnancy. So we decided to go to Bernardo's Find a Family to do adoption. And they went through the process and they said, you're fantastic, we love you. Just to get, to finally approve you, we think you might need to lose a little bit of weight. It's not, it's okay, it's all right. But the thing is, they've got rights to say that because they want children to be brought in a healthy environment. They, these children, especially these sort of children are coming from a difficult environment. They need to be coming into a very nurturing environment that can actually look after them. And so I think they've got every right to do that. And so my wife and I turned to each other, our actual assessor was going to Weight Watchers at the time, so we said, well, let's, let's do that. And so my wife dragged me along to Weight Watchers on the 16th of January 2013.
Okay, so hang on, hang on a sec, let me interrupt you. And you say she dragged you along, okay?
But I'm a guy, I don't have a problem. So she literally, she said, you're coming with me and you're going to join, and that's what happened, yeah.
So was your issue about joining because you thought it wasn't, it wasn't really a place for guys, or was it, what did you know, did you know much about Weight Watchers?
This is my third go at Weight Watchers. The reason it worked for me this time was the fact that as a guy, I could never, ever do a food diary. Wouldn't happen. But now I can do it on phone. I could be betting at Sportsbet. But I'm not. I'm actually doing, and that's the truth of the matter, I can do it all on my phone and it's fantastic, yeah.
Wonderful. Okay. So you went along with your weight loss journey similar to Kayla. Did you have a moment as well where you really struggled through your weight loss?
Well, so what happened was, we got approved in April to be, so my wife actually, I should really tell this story, my wife was big too. She was 124 kilos. She actually lost 50 kilos as well and got to goal.
Wow, isn't that one, we'd better give your wife a round of applause.
So the reason we had the success, the reason is we did it together, that was the big thing. So by April, by June 2013, we actually got a phone call, we had two hours to decide, we had 10 minutes to decide, and two hours later, a five-day-old baby was in our house.
Wow.
So that was in the middle, my wife had lost about 24 kilos, I'd lost about 30. We looked at the chart today, I looked at 30 kilos. So we ended up caring for this child until she was about 10 months old. And then we got the heartbreaking call that they decided to return her to her family. But yeah, but then what happened was, is my wife had lost 50 kilos, I'd lost 77 kilos, and my wife was pregnant two weeks later.
What a nice call.
Yeah, and on the 18th of December this year, last year, sorry, Charlie Ira was actually born, and there's some photos of him, so.
That's beautiful, just gorgeous. Absolutely beautiful. Wow, what an amazing journey, not just with your weight loss, but with so much else going on in both of your lives. I've got a question for you. So I know that you and Kayla were both part of the Healthy Life Awards, and you're both finalists for your state. So you get to spend a whole week together. Tell me a little bit about that amazing week, because we're about to kick off soon. In May, we start our journey for the Healthy Life Awards as well. So any of you budding Slimmers out there, and I know who you are, this is your opportunity to think about heading into this fantastic week. Tell us a little bit about that.
I actually found that it's the most inspirational week of your life. You learn so much about your fellow contestants, but so much about yourself. You actually, it's, it's not about, like, I went, and I'll tell you why I entered the competition. Because I was, when I was born, I was, I was a big child my whole life, I looked at some of my old photos, I never had a good photo of myself. And I wanted to get a good photo. And I knew that if I, when I entered this competition, I was going to get a good photo, you know? And the thing was, and the thing was, it wasn't just about the photos, it wasn't about that, it was, you learned so much about yourself. And I'll tell you right now, and to see people blossom, I saw this little one here blossom through that week, it was just amazing. And just truly the most, if you get the chance, just enter. Entering is the most fantastic way of learning so much about what you've been through. If your journey can be the smallest amount of weight loss or the biggest amount of weight loss, it's just your journey. And you can learn so much about yourself just from reading about people. Get on the website, read about the stuff about the awards, because you're, it's incredibly most inspirational week in my life. And it was, I was numb when I got home, I know that.
Wow. And Kayla, would you agree in terms of how special that week was for you as well?
Yeah, definitely. It was, it was the best week of my life. Especially, exactly what Grant Lee said is, you turn up, you forget it's a competition, which we became best of friends.
And do you think you'll always remain really good friends?
Yeah, definitely. So Grant Lee's my Weight Watchers dad.
That's lovely. Actually, when Kayla walked in this morning...
Not sure I'm happy about this, no.
When Kayla walked in this morning, I said, hi, I'm Mari. And she saw Bec, she said, I'll be back. Race dived and threw her arms around him. It was really quite beautiful to see, which is really, really lovely. And held on for, you know, probably two or three minutes. It was really lovely.
It was actually me. No, sorry.
That was lovely, really, really lovely. So anyone have any questions that you've got of Grant Lee that they'd like to ask you? Yes, Nicole, would you like to stand up, please?
Grant Lee, I just wanted to ask you, how you went with your friends, male friends, how did they actually cope and deal with your weight loss?
It's a great question. And I, a similar experience to what you had, I was everyone's bigger friend. I was that guy in their life that was, in fact, I did a Weight Watchers meeting once and someone walked up to me and hugged me and wanted to take a selfie with me. And I said, well, Zach said, my husband once said to me that he didn't have a weight problem because he was, at least he wasn't as big as the guy that worked at Harvey Norman. And so she took a photo of me with me. And yeah, yeah, because anyway, but he, I actually, I realised what happened was, is I would get, I'd lost that 30, 40 kilos, and everyone was saying to me, you look fantastic, don't lose any more. You know why you put on weight or you stop losing weight? You start gaining weight from people patting you on the back, okay? I had to work through that because I realised I was everybody's bigger person. And suddenly, they were becoming my bigger people, all right? And that's what got me through that stage, yeah. Really important that you understand that you, you've got to get, if you, you set yourself, that goal is so monstrous. I mean, when I got into Weight Watchers and they wrote down 84 kilos, and I was 162, that was like, I don't know how to do that. How can you possibly imagine? But it was step by step, it was support of the leader, all that sort of thing can get you to that stage. And it's important to realise that people are going to stop you because you're their bigger person.
Yeah, and I think we've all felt that at some point, haven't we? Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much for sharing that amazing story with us. And lastly, but certainly not least, is our local girl, Cathy. Cathy was actually my member at eldersly. And Cathy, would you like to share your total weight loss?
I've lost 28 kilos.
Now Cathy, when you joined our meeting, you came in with a very little baby.
Yes, I did.
How old was she when you walked in the door?
She was nine weeks old.
Nine weeks old, wow. So with such a young child and another, another child as well, how old?
Oh, she was about 23 months, I think.
Wow, so not even quite two, so a handful between the two of them, okay? So at that point, what for you was your trigger moment to think, I've got to do something about my weight?
Oh, look, I caught myself in a mirror and I was just sitting down and I wasn't doing all the things that we do when we're in front of a mirror.
So what do we do usually?
Well, suck it in. Suck it in. The lighting's right.
Lift the chin.
I stand a bit side on. Do all that, shoulder up.
We lift the chin, don't we?
All the things that we do. And all the things that I had on Facebook of myself were all these things. My whole life was built around these tricks to make me look a certain way. And I was sitting down and I saw myself in this mirror and I suddenly saw what obviously everybody else was seeing. And it wasn't what I was expecting at all. I know, I knew I was overweight, but I didn't realise quite.
So from that point, when you saw yourself in the mirror, to actually walking in the doors of Weight Watchers?
It was, it was a couple of weeks. And I was really, I sort of tried to stay at home a bit, I didn't want to bump into people, and I felt I was really embarrassed, just really genuinely embarrassed. And I sort of had a bit of a hard time because I think sometimes it's really hard to admit that you've got a problem and that you're not doing it on your own. Because I'd always been bigger and I'd sort of built a personality that I was the big happy friend, you know, I was the funny one, and my friends were the cute ones. And that's how we did things. So I had this, I had to sort of break that whole thing down and say, well, no, maybe, maybe that's not what I'm happy with.
Yeah, okay. And so had you ever been to Weight Watchers before?
Never been to Weight Watchers before.
Never been. So what made you choose Weight Watchers?
I had, my mother-in-law had been before, and I knew that it had worked for her. And then I went and had a look online and I realised that I could do it completely anonymously online and I wouldn't actually have to go and tell anyone that I was overweight. I could just do it at home and everybody would think that I was fine. So I joined up and then I started talking to, I have a big mothers group online, and I started to talk to one of them. And she sort of said to me, if I told you how much I love going to Weight Watchers meetings, you would think I was crazy. She said, you've got to go, it is the best thing, you'll love it. And I thought, oh, you know, I really, I'm not really the joining type. I don't really like that.
So what was your fear, Cathy? What was your fear about coming in?
Well, it was admitting to everyone. I didn't want to be a Weight Watcher, I really didn't. And now here I am and I love it, you know? I love coming in.
So have you called that girlfriend back and said, I love my meetings?
I have, I actually, I messaged her and said, you will not believe I am at goal and it's because of you, you know?
That's very special. So tell us a little bit about your journey. So from, from memory, you actually lost weight pretty well because you were feeding in the early days.
I was breastfeeding from when I started for quite a while. So I lost really slowly. I came in and they sort of recommend only losing, I think, 500 grams when you're breastfeeding. So I stuck to that. So it was sort of the long haul and every week, as long as that number went down, I was happy. It didn't matter if it was only 200 grams or 100 grams, as long as it was heading in the right direction, I figured eventually I would get there. But I think at, for when I very first came, I really thought I'd only get to probably like 10 kilos. I'd knock a bit off and I'd be like I was before I had my babies. And I'd be, be fine with that because that's how I was. And then I know I got to 15 kilos and Mari made a big fuss out the front and it was really lovely and she gave me a little thing and it said 15 kilos. And I thought, I'll put it up in the kitchen. And I thought, you know what, if I can do that, like, I never thought that was possible. I can, I can get to goal and I can really finish this, which is what I wanted, you know? Something I didn't, I sort of put it down, but I didn't think I would ever actually get to goal.
And I think many, many members feel that way. There's this number and it just seems too far, but you've got living proof right here in this room that it's very, very doable. So one more thing I want to ask you, Cathy, I remember towards the end of your weight loss journey, when you only had a few kilos to go, you hit a plateau, much like Kayla, and you actually even went up a little bit, didn't you? So do you want to explain a little bit about what possibly went on?
Well, sort of looking back, what I, what I think happened, and I'm pretty sure happened, is that I was so close to goal and I could see it. And I had this moment in my head that if I get to goal, I can then stuff it up. If I don't ever get there, I've got nothing, I can't ruin it, you know? It doesn't matter because I never reached it. So I started doing a little bit of self-sabotage and I came in and I was sort of going up each week. And I was so devastated to see these numbers going up, but you know, we're funny things in our heads and I was doing odd things to myself. And I was really sabotaging how I was going. And I spoke to Mari and Mari sort of said to me, you know, we don't, once you reach goal, we don't abandon you, you're not just thrown out into the street.
Get out, you're there now.
Off you go, back to your old life. This is, this is it, you can come in and we'll support you throughout. And so that's what, what I've done, I continue to come into the meetings every week and really get that support to, to stay where I am. Because it is, you've got to keep, you know, some weeks I don't have the best week, still I go up a little bit, and the next week I can bring it back down again without going for months and months and having another problem.
Absolutely. Yeah, so would you agree, I guess I'll ask the question of all of you, that continuing to be Weight Watchers members and still having your, your monthly wains and being a part of your meetings has a lot to do with keeping you where you are? So Kayla?
Yeah, I try to attend my meeting nearly every week still, just because I love it, I enjoy it, I get along.
Another lover of meetings, yay.
I get along really well with my leader and all of the members as well. So yeah, I feel, I feel sad if I miss out on my meetings, so.
Great, terrific. All right, Grant Lee?
I think the thing is that we stop, we're almost a club, or not a club, but we really enjoy the people we spend time with at Weight Watchers meetings, you know? Because we all have something in common, we all have a goal we want to achieve. And, and you know, I talk about like with Charlie, when I went to my, my meeting in Dapto with Tina, one of the girls there had knitted him a jumper. And it's like, you know, like, you just can't believe how nice the people are because we all understand what we're going through.
Yeah, there's a lot of empathy in a Weight Watchers room.
The biggest thing that you gain, you can, is the reason we have so much success at Weight Watchers is because of the support we all get.
Absolutely, for sure, for sure.
I think that's really important too, if I can just add, that it's, it's support, I was saying to the ladies before, it's support without competition. And I think that's really nice. There's no, you're losing more than me, you're losing it faster, it's, we're all doing it at our own pace and, you know, getting there our own way.
Absolutely, absolutely. So ladies, gentlemen, anyone have any questions for Cathy? That you'd like to ask of her? Yes, do you like to stand up?
When you're having your small weight losses and small gains, how did you beat the frustration? And what did you change to get it moving again?
I just plugged away at it. I just kept plugging away with those small, small, um, losses. And then when they'd slow right down, because I was breastfeeding, I'd talk to Mari and we'd take a few points off. And, um, just to make sure that, you know, my baby was still happy and all of that was going along okay. So, we'd just drop it down a little bit and then I'd start sort of picking it back up again. And then when it slowed down, we did it again. So, it was a really gradual journey and that was so important for me because I really wanted to breastfeed and I really wanted to be successful at that. And I didn't want anything to come between that. And I knew that sort of, um, weight loss can, um, be problematic for that sort of thing. So, Weight Watchers is a really good program for that sort of, sort of thing.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
Um, you were talking about the lack of competition in here. Did you find as you were losing weight, your friends outside were trying different fad diets to try and out-lose your weight?
Uh, yeah, well, in a way, I, I did have, um, friends on various weight loss things and some of them were losing really quickly and others. But I think, um, coming into the meeting and having that support and, um, every week, it sort of didn't, it didn't affect me too much, the outside competition, because I really focused on what was happening in the room. And I, you know, there were times when I came in and I thought, "Oh, it's only, you know, 200 grams and I just wish it was a bit more." You know, Mari and Sharon would always say to me, "You know, it is a loss. You are heading in the right direction and you'll get there." And that sort of really, really kept me going.
And so, those friends of yours on the fad diets, I've just got to ask. Where, where are they now with their loss? Have they been successful, Cathy?
Yeah, some of them have, um, have gone back up a little bit, so.
But no one looks glorious like you, do you? Not at all, no. Cathy, I just, I did want to ask you actually, in terms of exercise, so I know exercise played a big role for you, Kayla, didn't it, with your personal training sessions, et cetera? You have got a, a great relationship, um, Grantley, with your Fitbit.
I love my Fitbit.
You love it and it really encourages you. But I know Cathy, with you early on, exercise wasn't something you liked.
Oh, no.
In, in fact, I think I remember the hate word coming out once.
There's a fair bit of a hate word in there.
Yes.
Yeah, I really, I really dislike exercise. And, and I'll, I'll be honest, I still don't do the gym shoes things very often. I really don't like ruining my hair and getting sweaty.
The important things, yeah, yeah.
You know, wearing ugly shoes, I don't like it. So, um, what I found sort of happened as, as I lost weight, I got more active. And I was more active with my children and I'd be more inclined to walk to the park, wearing my normal shoes, not putting on gym shoes, not doing any of that. But my lifestyle is far more active and my weight loss actually increased as I became more active, despite that I wasn't doing what you might call exercise.
Exercise, yeah. Because I would remember Cathy would say, "You know, I don't exercise." But then she'd share how she spent an hour doing the gardening or had taken two kids in a pram up, you know, a two-kilometre walk to her mother's house. And I'm thinking, "That's exercise, but I won't use the word because she may never do it again." So, I do actually, actually remember that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a bit of a mental block. If I call it exercise, I'm not going to do it. If I go, I'm just going to go for a walk to the shops, I can, I can do that.
Now, Grantley, I, I believe apart from your Fitbit, the other, um, item that you love, the tool that we have at Weight Watchers is the scales.
Well, yeah, I, I, the biggest, the most important set of scales you'll ever buy are the ones you put in your kitchen. It's amazing to me when I sit and talk to Weight Watchers members and they don't understand the concept of weighing, because, you know, that, that small amount, a little, if you don't weigh what you're eating and even if you guesstimate, you could be having more points a day. And those, although, across the day, you could be having a lot more points. And it's really important that you weigh your food. My wife and I still today is having 130 grams of trump steak, having 100 grams of baked potato. We write this all down and we, and we, I always weigh my 45 grams of oats every morning. Still do. I know, I could probably physically work out how much it is, but I want to weigh it, you know? And that is the reason why we're tracking here. If you're guessing what you're eating rather than weighing what you're eating, you're not, you, you've got to weigh it to make sure you know what you're doing. So, really important that you weigh what you're eating.
Yeah, okay, all right. Cathy, for you?
Oh, look, I love strawberries and cream and I always have. And when I started, I remember buying the strawberries and the first week, I ate them with no cream. And I was just like, because it's just strawberries. And then I thought to myself, "How can I do this?" And I got out my spoons and I thought, you know, "I've got a couple of points free here", measured out a couple of tablespoons and counted it. And the difference between just glug, 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 and having a measured amount makes no difference to the taste of it.
Absolutely.
None at all. But it makes all the difference to how many points you're using.
Absolutely. And I guess then when you're measuring it out and you know that it's okay, then you get rid of the guilt then, don't you?
Oh, totally gone.
So, it actually tastes better when it's guilt-free?
Yeah, absolutely.
Most of the time?
Yes, most of the time.
Yes, absolutely, all right. Well, I'd like to, um, anybody else have any questions before we... Yes, please.
The main thing I wanted to know is how did you handle drinking wine, beer? Those are all things that make us put on weight during your time?
Anyone?
Well, I, I found myself limiting. I would actually not have, the biggest thing I stopped probably drinking was, I found myself would drink and I didn't realise how many points I was consuming. And you, you can actually, you, you find yourself, the, the natural high, the natural... The reason you were needing the alcohol when you were big was because you were, your, your body was full of so much bad food that it was requiring the alcohol to calm yourself down. And when you start eating better, okay, you actually start exercising, you get that natural high, that natural relaxant and you don't need as much alcohol, right? And the thing is, you actually, you don't, you don't. And so, I can, I don't really drink any much, you know? And the thing is to me is that, um, that's how I cope with it. So, often I would like watch, I used to love watching the football, as I said, watching the iced coffee. I would go to the gym now and watch the football on, on the treadmill. So, that's the sort of things that I would do. And, uh, you know, so, yeah, it's, it's a matter of, of, but drink-wise, that's what I would do. But I still have a glass of wine occasionally, but just a glass of wine. And not, you don't take the big glass to fill it right for top. You have a glass of wine, okay?
That's right. 150ml.
150ml.
That's the one, yes. Actually, no.
Not much.
No, it's not a lot, no. Cathy, for you?
Oh, look, for me, well, for the first part, when I was breastfeeding, it wasn't really an issue, thankfully. But then as my points went down and I was able to drink again, you know, I obviously had a little bit of balancing to do. So, I always use my 49 because, you know, that's what it's there for. And, um, I, I measure all my wine. Keeps me, it makes me a bit happier in the mornings, actually. But yeah, I measure my wine and I also looked at other alternatives. So, you know, like, um, mixed drinks, so like a gin and tonic. If you get diet tonic water, it's, I think, two or three points. You know, so I just look at those sorts of things and try and work out and do exercise beforehand. So, you know, if I'm going to have a party, I can fit it in.
Find a way, don't you? You have to be all find a way. And you might not have even noticed, but exercise is now part of your vocabulary.
I know, I know.
See how things change, miracles can happen. And Kayla, for you?
Well, with my age group, um, alcohol is a big part of...
Of course, absolutely.
My age group and a lot of my friends and going out Saturday, Friday, Saturday nights, it often revolves around alcohol. Luckily, I sort of saw that alcohol wasn't that good for me when I first started losing weight. So, I started to cut back a bit and like Grantley now, I, I hardly ever drink because I don't need it, I found. Um, yeah, every now and then I'll enjoy a drink or something like that. And you just make sure that for that day, that you know you are going to be having a few extra wines or something during the night, that you work your points out. So, you make sure that you're still eating throughout the day, but you're having some zero-point veggie soup or things like that, something that's going to fit in. And you just, you work, make it work. That's the great thing about Weight Watchers, it works, it, you can fit everything in, so.
It's just about choices, isn't it?
Definitely, yeah.
Anybody else like to ask any other questions? Yeah, if you'd like to stand up, Karen?
I just wanted to ask about health. Did any of you see any major changes to your health?
Oh, yeah. So, with myself, I have had two, three knee operations before my 16th birthday. When I was 16, I spent every week at the Royal Children's Hospital in Melbourne, um, seeing physios, OTs. I did quite a lot of damage to my knee. And I, that's another reason why I hated exercise, because I couldn't do it because it was painful. And since I have lost the weight, I've had no troubles with my knee at all. I've never had any pain with it and I exercise every day of the week. So, in health terms, it's amazing that how much, I never thought, I knew that the doctors always told me I needed to lose weight, it would help with your knee, but it's not something you wanted to... You never thought it would make that much of a difference, yeah.
I was trying, health-wise, I, 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 I was lucky in the sense I didn't really have that many health problems. But I think, the thing is that I just found myself being able to cope with stress a lot better. That's the biggest thing from, from a mental health perspective. I was a lot, I was a complete, I was always stressful, I was really, really bad. And now I can cope with stress so much better. I just, nothing, not, don't, I can get through the day and I'm not lethargic and things like that. And I was getting that stress. So, my, my, my stress levels are certainly a lot better than what they were used to be.
Isn't that fantastic? And do you think that part of that could be because you're feeling a lot more in control and a lot more confident and a lot more settled? That other things are easier to laugh at?
I think that's all, and the fact that, you know, I was lugging around that 77 kilos of weight everywhere I walked, was the fact that that was taking up so much of my energy every day that, that I don't do that anymore now. Now, I can, I can put that effort into calming calm and remaining relaxed and things like that, so, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, it was pretty much the same for me. I just found myself with far, you know, so much more energy. That was the main thing, you know, um, to chase the children and to be out and about with them and, you know, take them to the park and take them out all the time and all of that sort of stuff. Everything became easier as I got lighter.
And I imagine with, um, the two girls now, what are their ages now, Cathy?
Um, they're two and three and a half.
You need a lot of energy.
Oh, I need a heap.
Imagine, yes.
I need a heap.
A lot of energy to keep you going, yes. Anybody else have any other questions they would like to ask? Belinda?
I know Bec, your leader, she's fantastic. So, I'd like you to just talk about her for a little bit and what difference she made. And secondly, as a 22-year-old, why in the world would you choose Weight Watchers?
Great question.
So, I'll start off with Bec. If you ever meet my amazing leader Bec, the only word you can sum up is crazy. She is, but the good crazy. So, um, Bec is one of those people that if she sees you walk into the room, she'll know every single person's name in the room. She knows everything about everybody. She just makes such an effort. She goes that extra mile every, with every single person. She was with me every step of the way. Any questions, any concerns, jump on the phone. "Bec, something's going on" or "Bec, I'm feeling like rubbish today." She was there. So, Bec has been probably the most motivating person throughout my whole weight loss, which, coming as a younger person into a Weight Watchers meeting, I was the youngest person there. Everyone was pretty much in my parents' age bracket at my meeting.
I thought there was anything wrong with that.
No, 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 not at all. So, I did, yeah, I, it did feel like everybody there were my parents. And Bec took on the role and she made me feel comfortable, I got to know everybody. And she made the absolute world of difference through my weight loss journey. Yeah, wouldn't have definitely done it without her, so thanks Bec, if you're watching.
If you're watching, Randy.
Um, and the other thing about joining as a, at the time, I was actually 18 when I first joined Weight Watchers. My mum did Weight Watchers and I knew it worked for her. And like one of the questions before is, I'd had tried other diets and I found that I was missing out on too much. I couldn't, I couldn't have a social life. I couldn't go out for lunch and breakfasts and hang out with my friends on the weekend and enjoy eating food because, "Oh, can you eat that? Are you, are you allowed to eat that or should you be eating that?" And you don't want to be told what you can and what do. Like, I know myself, I just rebel because I don't want to be told you can't do something. And that's the bonus of being with Weight Watchers at my age is you can do whatever you want. And since, um, becoming involved with the Healthy Life Awards and the Youth Ambassador, I've had so many people which are my age, which I would never, ever have known, message me on Facebook, randoms that I've never met before, talk to me at meetings, all sorts of things, going, "Well, we saw that you're young and you did it, so it's obviously not that dorky to do." Or it's... Because that was the thing, you, I always thought, I will admit when I, when I first joined, that Weight Watchers were for an older category. And losing weight's not for an older category, it's for everybody that needs to do it. And, um, so getting involved with younger people, it really means that everybody can do it and that's what we need to promote, that health is for everybody.
Absolutely. And I guess there is this idea, isn't there, that, you know, Weight Watchers is somewhere where just some overweight, elderly women just get together for a chit-chat? Which we do, but it is a lot more than that and it's for the gentleman and the younger crowd. And, and I think that's really important to get that message out there as well. Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions from anyone? Yes, please.
What advice would you give lifetime members to stay lifetime members and stay motivated? Like, think about yourselves in the next five years. I'm sure that you foresee that you're still going to be a lifetime member and under your bulk. Is there anything that you could say to keep lifetime members motivated and still continue to come into the meetings?
I guess the, the thing is, the reason that you have the success you have is because of the meetings. I guarantee you, when you stop going and you stop, you lose that, the most important facet of Weight Watchers, which is the support, okay? You'll actually find that it makes it that much harder, okay? Just going along to the meeting every once, once a month as a lifetime member, wherever you can get along to a meeting, you know, weighing in, it's that little self-check. It's really, really important, you know? I spoke, I spoke to someone earlier on that's been a member for 27 years and, and that's amazing. And that, and, and the thing is that you know from that is the fact that this is not a diet. This is not a full stop. Goal is not a full stop. Goal is the next start of Weight Watchers. Lifetime membership is the next start, you know? You can still come along, you can still get your bars, you can still get your food and things that you know that you are success, you really will. It's really important that you keep coming along. But you're, the most important thing you also are doing as a lifetime member is you are proving to everyone else in the room that it can be done.
And you can keep it off, which is important, yeah. Cathy, would you like to add anything to that?
I sort of, um, I used to think when I came in, "My goodness, these people are coming in, they've been coming in for years. What are they still doing here?" But I look at it now in a sort of, um, you know, you get your hair done and your roots grow back. You don't just go, "I've had it done once." That's it. People go in once a month to have their nails done, to have their hair retouched, to do all those things. And I sort of see the meetings as a, a chance to do that. It's the, it's the same sort of maintenance that you do on any other part of your appearance. It's the same for me, that's how I look at it.
That's a nice way of looking at it, actually, yeah. It's a lovely way of looking at it, for sure. All right. Anybody else? Well, as, um, as we always do in our Weight Watchers meetings, and I don't want you to be shy this morning, but you've all weighed in as is regular. So, let's have the celebrations that we usually do have. So, who would like to share how they've gone over this week? Feel free to dob your friends and you're getting a good tap over the shoulder there. So, how did you go this week?